All to order the May 14th Yosemite County College Board of Trustees meeting to order. Our first item, Zoom access will be provided to the public only if remote attendance by trustee under AB 2449 is approved by the board in item 2.3 of the agenda. I would like to announce for the record that the meeting is being conducted pursuant to California Code 54953 concerning teleconference and meetings. Board member Aguilar is participating in this meeting by speakerphone from 60 Dudley Street, apartment 327, Chelsea, Massachusetts. In accordance with the Brown Act, this location is identified on the agenda for this meeting. I would now like to ask board member Aguilar respond to the following questions. Trustee Aguilar, are you able to hear our proceedings on this end?
Yes, I am.
I just have to ask you a few questions. You already answered, you can hear. Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes, I do.
Has the agenda been posted at the location?
Yes, it is.
Is your location such that any member of the public could participate in the public portions of the teleconference from your location?
Yes.
Members of the board, are you able to hear board member Aguilar? I think we all can.
Yes.
Thank you. Because we're having a meeting with teleconference, all sessions will be by roll call vote. So open session agenda 2.1, call to order.
You did that. Do you want to go to 2.2?
Okay, 2.2, establishment of quorum.
Trustee Aguilar?
Here.
She begs. She expressed present. Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Garrett?
Present.
Trustee, or Vice President Nicolau?
Present.
And Board President Richards?
Here. So the action, the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approves governing board members' requests for participation in the board meeting virtually remotely citing the Just Clause or emergency circumstances provision of AB 2449 specifying circumstances relating to the quality of the reason, or approves governing board remote attendance as a reasonable accommodation under ADA provisions. Trustee Nancy Hinton made the request to attend the board remotely as a reasonable accommodation under AB 2449. She is currently in the hospital and wishes to participate in this meeting. Nancy, I have a few questions for you.
Actually, we have to take, the board has to take action to accept.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, I guess this is roll call.
You can do all in favor.
All in favor.
Actually, no, you can't because Antonio. My apologies. Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee begs?
Here.
Trustee, or?
Yes.
Sorry.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
Vice President Nicolau?
Yes.
President Richards?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, Nancy, now I have to ask you a few questions.
Let me bring her in. I just got here. Trustee Hinton, if you can unmute, please. Thank you.
Nancy, are there any other adults in the room with you? If so, what is the general nature of your relationship with them?
You're muted.
An elderly woman and medical professionals that may come in during this session.
Very good. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to 2.4. Are there any statements of conflict? Looking left, looking right, not seeing any. 2.5, do we have any public comments?
None.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn to closed session. Madam Synographer, you going to tell us what we're going to talk about?
Yes, the board will adjourn to closed session to discuss items 3.1 through 3.7 listed in the May 14th regular meetings closed session agenda. The time of adjournment is 3:07.
We'll be back.
Okay, I'd like to call the 722nd regular meeting of the Yosemite Community College District Board of Directors Wednesday, May 14th. Regular meeting to order at 5:45. I apologize for the delay. We had some technical issues. Trustee Garrett, will you leave us in the place of allegiance?
Absolutely. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no being justice above all.
Thank you. Madam Synographer, could we have the roll call, please, for establishment of court?
For the record, the student trustee position is currently vacant. Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Davis. Trustee Garrett.
Present.
Trustee Hinton.
Present.
Vice President Nicolau.
Present.
And President Richards.
Present, thank you.
I was established.
Next, we do have a report out of closed session. If you'd share it, Madam Synographer.
In closed session, the board voted unanimously to approve the notice of intent to dismiss and the statement of charges against a permanent faculty employee.
Thank you. Do we have any statements of conflict? Doesn't appear we do. Any requests for changes of order of business? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comments, and I have a statement that I've been asked to read. Before beginning this regularly scheduled governing board meeting tonight, I'd like to make a few announcements. We are here to conduct the public's business, and we wish to review all items on the agenda and hear from as many people as possible. In order to do so, I'd like to remind everyone that we must follow board policies. For us to complete tonight's board meeting in orderly manner, please remember that each speaker is limited to four minutes per comment. We must act with decorum and civility. The board may admire speakers who act out of order or in violation of board's policy. In the unlikely event speakers or the audience are disruptive and prevent the orderly continues of the meeting, we will have to seek the removal of this disruptive individual. With that, I'll open the public comment.
We have two speaker request forms, one from Matthew Gutierrez.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, and Chancellor Young, and everyone else here as well. So, I have come up here before to talk about the second student trustee, and I just want to kind of reiterate over that and just continue talking about it because I think it's very necessary. And I just want to, let's bring up an example previously with the transportation. When that was an issue and there was no transportation for students, it would have been much easier to have a student voice on if there was a trustee at either campus and to continue that representation without pause. And also, imagine if a student was able to correctly represent the students. Like in Columbia, look at the atmosphere. It's surrounded by woods, correct? And so then, if you were to have specific zones for students to smoke, yes, I understand that here at MJC, it's a smoke-free zone. But it may be different with Columbia because you know that students are going to continue to smoke either way, but rather have an area for them to smoke so that you prevent any wildfires. But a student here at MJC may not inherently understand that at first. And so, a student from Columbia may not also understand specific needs that we have here at MJC as well. And so, in order to properly represent the students, there has to be a co-current trustee, student trustee for each campus. Thank you.
Well, generally, we don't comment on public comment, but I can tell you, the board, I believe, would be supportive of this. I think you need to get with the people at MJC and determine what you want to do. And I would not have transportation or getting here as a hindrance. I think that we can find support for that. But I think it'd be great to have another one. I think most of my colleagues share that. So, thank you.
Next speaker, Celeste Randolph.
Good evening, Board. I just want to inform that during ASMJC's election, we occurred many problems. One of the biggest being that we had technological issues during voting that meant many students could not vote. This led to, during our last Senate meeting, majority of ASMJC decided to not certify the election because students have the right to vote. And because of this technological error, even though not being anyone's set who set it up, it still was everyone's issue. And it became a big concern that led to the non-certification. This is still an ongoing problem that we're still working to solve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have no other cards.
Okay, now we'll move on to 5.1, which is a personal matter, and it's approval of employment contract for the interim chancellor of Yosemite Community College District. And I'm bound to read the following statement. Next item on the agenda is a discussion and possible approval of the employment agreement for interim chancellor Lena Tran. The full proposed employment agreement is available to the public now, but before we can take action on the proposed contract, I have to provide the following verbal summary of compensation and benefit terms of the proposed contract. Item one, the employment agreement would be effective from June 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, with the potential for a one-year extension. The interim chancellor's salary will be $325,000 annually, paid in 12 monthly installments. The interim chancellor shall have 17 paid holidays and 21 vacation days. The interim chancellor shall earn one sick leave per day per month. The interim chancellor shall receive health, dental, and visual insurance for herself and dependents. The interim chancellor shall receive short-term and long-term disability insurance. The interim chancellor shall receive a leadership team stability stipend when eligible. The interim chancellor shall receive an iPhone with an unlimited data plan. If the interim chancellor is unilaterally terminated without cause during the agreement, she would receive the amount remaining on the agreement not to exceed six months of pay. This concludes the summary of the employment agreement. We will now discuss and consider approval of the agreement. So first, I need a motion on this item. Motion to approve?
I'll give a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Nancy. With that, I will open the public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on this item, please come up.
Hello, Giselle Flores, academic senate president. Since the action item has been placed before constituent reports, it is imperative that I speak on behalf of faculty who are concerned about the process of the interim chancellor search. From the beginning, we have said that this needed to be a full search with meaningful constituent representation. How is it possible that out of 30 applicants, there were only two candidates moved forward to constituent questions round? In that process, all constituent representatives unanimously recommended one candidate, yet members of the board voted against the recommendations of every constituent group in the district to approve a different candidate. As predicted, our voices were not considered in this decision. The concern is that faculty confidence in board of trustees is definitely lacking.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'll close the public comment. Any comments from trustees? Trustee Garrett, anything? Trustee Davis?
Yes, I think when a motion is before the board and you're going to vote, say, against that motion, then you have an obligation, at least to say why. And I've been, I was opposed to the process. I did not vote with the majority. Came to the majority decision of the board, but I was not in favor of that, not in favor of the appointment. And now, I can't, to stay consistent, vote in favor of this. So I'll be opposing this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's call the question. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Becks.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
No.
Trustee Garrett.
No.
Trustee Hinton.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar.
Yes.
Vote is five in favor. Please, motion to approve.
Thank you. Interim Chancellor Tran, would you like to make a few comments?
Good evening, everyone. I want to begin by thanking the board trustee by placing your confidence in me, by naming me the interim chancellor of the YCC. It is truly an honor to serve in this role and to continue supporting our students, our faculty, and our staff, both at Columbia College and MJC. As president of Columbia College, I could tell you firsthand that I have witnessed the countless dedication, talent, and passion that exists across our district. And for that, I am truly deeply grateful for the support of Columbia College and the colleague at MJC for your trust and ongoing support. As interim chancellor, I truly look forward to working closely with everyone in this room and outside this room so we can make the best of both colleges by serving every single student at our district. And I'm committed to strengthening the collaboration across our district, fostering an open and a very courageous conversation among each other, and also improve the relations between the board trustee, the classified professional, the faculty, and all the constituents group within our district. I know that as a team, we will be able to enhance the district image, increase our community partnerships, and really expand our institutional givings and grants, and let me assure, pursue every possible opportunities so that we can help both colleges to continue to serve as the engines of excellence and opportunities in our region. So, once again, thank you for this tremendous honor, and I am so excited for what we can achieve. Together we rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, I'm going to, this is the consent agenda. Is there anyone that wants to pull anything from consent? Okay, may I get a motion to approve? Yes. Oh, don't I do the motion before the public comment?
The public comment is not on necessarily this item, but with regards to the meeting.
Go ahead. We're probably not following the right procedure, but go right ahead. Please, welcome. Welcome back.
Thank you. My name's Lisa Shutt, and I just have a question about the procedure for trustee Hinton. I believe her camera should be on. Her vote is supposed to count.
Okay. I'll make sure it's on. Thank you. It is on. There she is, right there.
She just, yeah, she just turned it on.
That needs to be into consideration for the previous vote.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So...
I'm going to rule that out of order. Unless you think we should revote? Trustees, do we want to revote?
Is there a first and a second, so then I can take the roll call?
For the consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve? Consent?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Now we have public comment on the consented items. Seeing them, let's go ahead and vote.
I make an announcement.
Oh, please, yes. I thought I had that down.
So, on tonight's agenda, we have three retirements, and it's customary for this board to recognize our staff for their years of service and everything they've done for our students and for the district. Tonight, we have Karen Day, 26 years of service, accounting technician, business services, Modesto Junior College. You know, given the landscape of financial aid and, excuse me, and everything that goes on with that, I can't imagine how much Karen has done for our students, for the college, in helping people achieve their higher-end goals. And I know she was intricately involved in that, so I want to thank her for that. Thanks for all the students' lives that she improved, and I wish her well in retirement. Lorraine Rasmussen, 18 years of service, custodian, facilities planning, maintenance, and transportation, central services, Columbia College. I've said this before, the custodians were our, sort of our ghost team behind the scenes when we were all impacted by COVID. And they were the ones on the front lines making sure that classrooms were clean, we had safe places to go. They helped a lot of students through that process and continue to do so. And I want to thank Lorraine for her role, especially during COVID, and wish her well in retirement. Finally, we have Timothy Vaughn, 29 years of service, professor of electronics and technology, School of Business and Computing, Modesto Junior College. You know, it's hard to find good faculty members that are in this field. And we all know technology is taking over more and more of our lives and becoming more and more important, and there's a lot of jobs out there. So Timothy did a lot to prepare students for all the fields of technology and find good-paying jobs out there and further their higher-end goals. So I want to thank him for that and wish him well in retirement. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Vice President Nicolau.
Yes.
President Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar.
Yes.
And trustee Becks.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous. Motion carries.
Okay, so out of abundance and caution, trustee Hinton, I'm going to ask you again, what was your vote for the interim chancellor?
I seconded the motion, so obviously it was a yes.
Thank you. Moving on, board committee reports. Trustee Garrett?
The finance committee meeting was canceled, so I have no report tonight to give. Thank you.
Board Policy Committee, trustee Becks.
We did not meet, so I have none.
Okay, you also, Modesto Junior College Foundation report?
We had our largest scholarship ceremony ever. I was there with the foundation. In June, they're going to have all their scholarships updated with donor profiles on the website. And I don't want to take anything away from Emily's presentation because she's about to give one. So, anyway, we're doing great at the foundation. Thank you.
Excellent. Moving on to number four, Columbia College Foundation report. Dr. Davis?
Well, we are meeting next week. I have a report for the following.
You also get to report on Stan Slough County Board, and I understand there was a great dinner. Unfortunately, I missed it, but I heard it was really good.
Well, trustee Becks and I both attended the Stan Slough County School Boards Association Dinner where teachers of the year from the K-12 districts were recognized. And we also heard a presentation from members of the sheriff's department who are tasked for human trafficking. And they shared aspects of their roles, strategies that they use, the danger that's out there for young people being enticed through social media. And they actually go out to schools now and train teachers and staff on how to recognize students that might have been trafficked or are in, maybe beginning to look at things they shouldn't be, I guess is the best way to say it. And anyway, it's great work. They shared a number of pictures of people, just like in the last year, that are now serving time because of their task force and out there for public service. And so we appreciated that, and that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we are now... Did I miss something?
VIP JP.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Garrett?
I'm used to being passed over. So, we had our annual strategic meeting last month, and I first want to compliment our risk management team at the district. Our numbers are really good, especially in the area of work comp, general liability. You know, this is a pooled authority between State Center, which is Fresno, and Merced Community College, and ourselves. And we are greatly served by that because it spreads the risk out amongst the three entities. We had a great presentation on the risk of fentanyl. I mean, I knew a little bit about it, but I've been out of the law enforcement business long enough to not understand all of the ins and outs of it, but the risk is there. It's very high. So it was great to have that presentation, and that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we'll go on to reports and information items. We're pleased to have a presentation from Modesto Junior College and Columbia College Financial Aid and Scholarships, one of our favorite things. And I'm told to be Aurelia Gonzalez, Emily Lawrence, Maureen Shipley, and Amanda Stevens. Did I get those right?
Shively.
Shively. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Chancellor Young.
Back of the line, it's welcome.
Thank you for allowing us to present. There was a request presented that more information about the impact of unmet need on scholarships be presented to the board. So, the four of us had some conversations to make sure that the things that we were doing are the same, college to college, and there are a lot of similarities. And so, we have some information on that this evening.
Good afternoon. My name is Aurelia Gonzalez. Like mentioned, I'm the director of Student Financial Services at MJC. And so, we're glad to be here today. Our goal today is to highlight a little bit of our processes when it comes to financial aid and awarding, and how two key components set the foundation for our awarding policies and procedures. In addition, we want to make sure that we talk about how we work in collaboration with other departments here on campus, like the foundation and EOPNS or next up. The goal, first of all, I The goal, first of all, I would like to highlight that our goal of both financial aid departments, Columbia College and MJC, is to maximize students' financial aid awards. Okay? So that is our mission, that we work to work. Our goal is not to reduce or to, or not to award. Basically, our goal is to make sure a student receives the maximum award that they receive. The first component that I would like to talk about is our, let's see, the cost of attendance. And so every year, Columbia College and MJC, financial aid departments, we sit, set together to establish a cost of attendance that will help us in our awarding process for the future, for the future year. This process aligns with the California Student Aid Commission. They provide the, the numbers. Basically, the data reflects our average expenditures for a nine-month, month, a nine-month budget, that it provides the framework for our, for us to award students. And so the cost of attendance is comprised by several components. We look at tuition and fees, books and supplies, food and housing. How do I move to the next slide? Thank you. So it, it looks at these components, tuition and fees, books and supplies, food and housing, personal expenses and transportation. These are our core components of the cost of attendance. And we look at the California Student Aid Commission for recommended amounts to ensure that our methodology remains accurate and equitable around, across the board with both Columbia College and MJC. Each year, we establish these components, and this is our 24, 25 cost of attendance. We just wanted to provide some information so that you can see what the data looks like for our cost of attendance. These numbers lay the foundation for our financial need and guides us in the distribution of, of financial aid. Nine, it's, it's a full-time student, 12 units or more, for fall and spring, because it's a nine-month budget. This is not taking in consideration any additional fees, like our bachelor's. We have those components built into our budget or out of state. This is a regular residency, California resident tuition budget. And so we use the cost of attendance to help us, guide us, and to also look at resources that we can successfully match with students, such as grants, scholarships, or other type of financial aid. Okay? And so Marnie will be talking about the second component, which is our unmet need.
I'm Marnie Shively. I work at Columbia College in the financial aid office, my counterpart Aurelia here. So what, how does unmet need work? Helps better if I have my glasses down. We calculate unmet need using the formula, which is the cost of attendance minus the student aid index, which last year was called the EFC, Estimated Family Contribution, and minus any other financial aid forms. This figure helps us identify financial aid gaps, students that, that students may experience. By identifying these gaps, we can connect students with additional support to help close those gaps and let students focus on where they actually should be focusing on learning and thriving. When a student has a zero unmet need, it means we've successfully done our job by maximizing their financial aid awards. Their full financial aid need has been met exactly as intended. Achieving zero unmet need is our ultimate goal. It's important to point out that it's very rare that a student actually achieves a zero unmet need at MJC or Columbia College. It's a rarity. Any slide, please? To ensure equity and maximization of support, we follow a thoughtful awarding process, from federal to state grants to institutional scholarships. This approach helps students achieve every dollar that they're eligible for, supporting them from enrollment until graduation. Aid is awarded in order from the California College Promise Grant, also known as a CCPG, formerly called the BOG, all the way through to federal loans. We do this with until a student's cost or need is met. We work closely with our campus departments, such as EOPS, NextUp, Basic Needs, and our foundation offices. We ensure that financial aid is distributed accurately, aligned with the cost of attendance, as well as following federal and state requirmance. This thoughtful process, we uphold physical responsibility and foster strong interdepartmental, making sure I got that one right, interdepartmental collaboration. In rare instances, as I have said previously, a student may receive more financial aid than their cost of attendance permits. When this happens, we adhere to federal guidelines to adjust the aid package, starting with loan reductions, to ensure that aid remains within an allowable limit. It's important to remember that loans are a form of financial aid, but they must be repaid. With students' long-term financial aid well-being in mind, we prioritize reducing loan amounts first, creating space for grants and scholarships that do not require repayment. Free money first, not something that has to be paid back, such as a loan. These safeguards help protect institutional compliance and promote the sustainability of distribution of aid. Through these close collaborations with both MJC and Columbia College Foundation, our departments work closely to uphold regulatory standards and ensure sound physical management. I'll now transfer this over to our foundation offices. Yes?
And just for clarity on this specific slide, when we say, when the total of all aid received by the student exceeds the cost, when we use the word aid here, are we talking scholarships and financial aid, like any sort of monetary support? Or are we only talking financial aid?
So that's any type of monetary support. So if a student gets a scholarship from, let's say they're a rising scholarship, or a rising scholar, and they get a scholarship to help support them to purchase books, that is still a form of aid. So it's any aid that that student receives.
That's super helpful, and probably someone else is gonna address this. This one, this is a big passion for me. So this is only aid that is counted through YCCD. If a company offers a scholarship and we don't track it, that's the loophole, yes?
No loopholes in financial aid. I want to, I want to specify that. We are, we, we are your regulatory followers to the dial. And if a student receives a scholarship from an outside entity, please tell me if I'm stepping in, but if they receive it from an outside entity and is given to our business office, foundation office, to issue to the student, it is counted as aid to the student. Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Okay. Okay. My colon.
Before you go, before you go. So at a previous meeting, we heard a presentation, and you shared about the fraudulent applications out there. Oh, it was compelling. And, and the good work that you and your team and all of our doing to, to combat that. I just wanted, I don't know if it's part of this presentation, but can you give us a 30-second, how's it going recently with?
First of all, thank you for remembering that, that warms my heart. Fraud is getting harder to catch. It's more of a campus slash district responsibility. There are things in work with the state chancellor's office that hopefully will make it harder for students to defraud financial aid. Columbia College is still proud to say that we have negated anybody who is not a real-life person from receiving financial aid.
Wow, congratulations. That's a big deal.
Thank you.
So we are gonna talk a little bit about scholarships. I'm Emily Lawrence from the MJC Foundation.
And Amanda Stevens from the Columbia College Foundation.
So a little bit on how scholarships work. This is just sort of the process that we use to determine who is eligible for an award. The biggest piece that, that's critical here is the vetting of the students. And that, as we just talked about, eliminates a little bit of the fraudulent. But we ask that, you know, no awards are ever announced, no awards are ever promised, no scholarships are ever granted until the vetting process happens, because we have to look at unmet need. And that's sort of the purpose of the integration of this presentation, because that's a crucial element for students in determining how much they can be awarded, if they can be awarded, and also when they can be awarded. So there's a little bit to that.
And at Columbia College, I don't have a scholarship specialist, so I am the one that does the vetting before the students get to go to, off to the committees to be scored. So when I, I've been in this role since December, and one of my first meetings that I had was with Emily, so that we could work together and kind of streamline our processes. So our scholarship cycle at Columbia College now is, is almost exactly aligned with Emily's. So as, whatever she is saying is true for Columbia College as well.
So Emily, help me through this, because this makes perfect sense, and I understand the why and the how. But I had three, if not four, students reach out to me personally this year, saying I was awarded these scholarships. But I've, I'm gonna use the wrong words. But I've exceeded my financial aid amount, so I can't get the money. Talk me through what I don't understand, how that happened, why it happened, and how we make sure it doesn't happen, because that seemed like a lot of students who probably needed funds, but perhaps the numbers didn't match up with requirements. Help, just help me understand that.
Sure. And this is just a little on the process, but the, to understand that, when a student is, applies for a scholarship and is determined they meet the eligibility for that scholarship, and, and we make the scholarship award, we're vetted, they've, we vet them to make sure that they have some unmet need. Depending on what their need status is, a lot of students can get, for example, a transfer scholarship. A transfer scholarship is always paid in the next year, because a student has to verify. So that takes them out of that financial need cycle and puts them into the next one. So anytime a student transfers over a year, and correct me if I'm wrong, then, then that changes their need for that current year. So when MJC, when I started at MJC, we were, the scholarship application period was in the fall, and we didn't do awards until August. In my mind, that's confusing for students, because you apply in one year, but you're not awarded until the next year, and it made it confusing as to what they were applying for. So we switched it and put the award ceremony at the end of the year in which they had applied. However, that means that if that student does not have existing unmet need that year, they cannot be awarded in April. So I may tell you in April, congratulations Jenny, you've gotten this scholarship, but if you don't have any unmet need, I cannot pay you until after the end of the summer session. Correct? Because that's counted in that, that financial aid for the new year. So students receive awards, and they get the notification, and they get excited, and they think they get their money tomorrow. And so we, we do a pretty extensive communication process with students to let them know, you've been awarded, you will either be awarded in April, you will be awarded after July 1, or you will be awarded in August. And so a lot of them, that translates to, I'm not getting my award. They're just not getting their award the day after it was announced. And so there is always some confusion in that timeline. And so there's also sometimes confusion in that, if you are getting a $2,000 award, you are checking your bank mobile for that $2,000 to hit. However, if you have $500 in fees, that comes out first. So when you're watching for 2,000 and it never hits, you call our office and you say, I got a $2,000 scholarship, it's not there. We have to help students understand that, well, you had $500 in fees, so you got $1,500 in your bank mobile. So that adds to the confusion. Sometimes students think they haven't received an award, when it's just been reduced by fees owed. So there is, there is a great deal of student confusion. They don't understand the process. It goes, it all goes through bank mobile. They sometimes don't understand how that works, and those timelines, you know, there are processes that are run on a weekly basis. Bank mobile is dependent on a number of different variables, the way the student has it set up, whether they have it set up, what kind of disbursement they are receiving, if they're getting a check, if it's going on a card, depending on their bank. So a whole host of things impact the timeline. But that is often, that lag between when I tell you you get your award and when your money actually shows up, creates a lot of confusion. So this one just kind of goes through the process of communication. It is our goal to make the timeliest awards possible, but again, taking into consideration whether or not students have unmet need impacts the timeliness of the award. But so this kind of just goes through the award process. They get multiple emails, they're awarded through our fund service or bank mobile. We also, at MJC, and I think, thank you notes, yes, you have to turn in a thank you note before anything even gets processed. So sometimes students are also a little confused by that. One, simply for the fact that they don't know how to write a thank you note. But two, we do not release the funds until they give us a thank you note, because we think that's extremely important for donors. And so all of those things pile on and impact their award timeline. So sometimes it does. It, it creates a little bit of confusion.
We have one more step at Columbia College. They get a link, and they have to go in and accept their award, and they don't get funded until they do that.
So there are kind of a number of things that impact timelines and, and add to the confusion. And we know this, and we try to make it as clear as possible, and we do send out multiple pieces of communication. And, you know, our doors are always open for students to come in and say, you know, what is happening, what's going on. I talked with probably three dozen students the night of our award ceremony, just explaining, you know, this is how it will work. And, and we have students come in on a daily basis. So internal versus external scholarships, because that also came up a, a little bit earlier. So internal scholarships, everything that, that we hold. So donors come to us, they create a scholarship with us, we hold the funds, the process. You can see across this is very, very similar. External scholarships, and here's the difference. If your organization outside of the college wants to award a student, and you say, hey, Leslie, I want to give you an award, here's a check for $100, you can do that. What you can't do is come to our scholarship ceremony and say, I'm gonna award Leslie a $100 scholarship today, and I'm just gonna hand her a check. Anything that comes through our processes, through our award ceremony, through our notification, through our application process, has to come through both the foundation and the business office, because then it does impact the whole financial aid picture. And so there is some miscommunication on that. You know, we have the odd donor, not very much anymore, but who says, well, I don't want to pay the fee, I don't want you to take a fee as the foundation out of my donation. I'd rather just give my money straight to the student. You can do that. You can find that person. What we can't allow is for departments, or divisions, or programs to just say, well, here's a whole bunch of students who applied, who you might like, you know, pick one of those, and we'll give it out. That circumvents the whole process. So we do have a number of external scholarships. However, at, at MJC, we make sure that those come through the foundation. So you can have an annual that you give out, but it still comes through the whole process. It's, we require an application, we require it to be scored by a committee, all of the things that ensure that we're following, you know, equitable, equitable processes for students to take advantage of the scholarships we have to offer.
So at Columbia College, our external scholarships are run by the business office, and most of those are given to students when they're in high school. And then when they come to Columbia, then they can receive those funds, and it does not come through the Columbia College Foundation.
In that situation, does it offset the cost of?
Yes.
It does offset. As long as it comes to the business office, it's gonna be part of the calculation. Otherwise, give it to them directly, let's say the Lions Club of a local community. Comes to you, it's gonna be part of the calculation. If it goes directly to the student, it's greedy, right? Okay.
And, and what is the fee?
We have a 4% fee.
Ours is 1%.
Thank you. Lastly.
You being a little greedy for one. I will tell you, I've heard 10, so you're both doing pretty well.
We're, we're pretty competitive.
Well, we have the Sonora Area Foundation in Sonora that is, we work really well with them, but they don't charge any fees. So they're kind of our competition, so.
It's probably why you don't have that extra person. You're only getting 1%.
Okay, and so finally, there was some confusion thrown in the mix. So AB 3240 came out, the California Ban on Scholarship Displacement Act, which threw a lot of confusion into the mix. There were some huge discussions across the Community College Foundation segment about what this means and what, you know, what was gonna come out of it, because a lot of people were like, now you have to separate a merit-based scholarship. Because a lot of people were like, now you have to separate a merit based scholarship versus a need based scholarship, you know, and and things like that. It ended up really, the the long and short of it is it applies to such a tiny, tiny, tiny sliver of our scholarship recipients that meet a huge number of criteria that it really means nothing at all. If you look at the language, I just pulled a couple of things out. When it talks about institutional gift, it talks about financial aid offered by the college or university to help a student does not mean a private scholarship. So it it does not make a distinction between the two. Cost of attendance calculation is still the impacting factor. Even in this displacement language, they still account for the calculation of cost of attendance. And again, at the bottom there, only applies to Cal Grant, Dream Act, state and or Pell Grant federal students. So the students that are, I mean, it's a a small enough population that it, you know, there isn't really anything to this and it just, it created way more confusion than it did anything else.
One last thing, I just wanted to say that Columbia College College also had our scholarship celebration in April and we gave out 230 scholarship awards over $300,000, so.
I had one other question. I can't remember the number of scholarships that you gave out, but I shook hands with a lot of people. A lot, a lot of students, which was wonderful. But one of the things that's really nice, if I understand correctly, is that you only have one application that students have to fill out, which I think is so nice because in other places you have to apply separately for every scholarship that you would want. So I think that's wonderful and it it does make it easier for the students despite all the other regulations.
And I appreciate you noticing that because we are very unique across the system for having that because a lot of them, and that is one of the reasons why some of our external scholarships stay external, because they want some additional requirements from students. And our position is, no, we we advertise one application for all so that it does not become confusing or onerous on the student, so.
That's great, thank you.
I think our former student trustee Gustavos here, do you have any questions for these people? Please come up.
Or maybe even reactions, I know you and I have talked about.
Yeah. I feel like my questions were kind of answered in this presentation. Again, thank you for the presentation. I just had a question, so like me as a student right now, I got, I was blessed enough to get awarded two scholarships, one a transfer scholarship so that when I, when I do transfer, another one being I would get awarded through here. I don't have unmet need from what I've been told, but I also just got another scholarship, which I also won't be able to get. My question that I I kind of came up when, you know, because you you were asking some amazing questions, kind of taking some off my plate, would be, let's say me as a student that I am transferring and I get awarded these three scholarships and I'm going to go to a school that's more, it's the cost is going to be more expensive. One is to transfer, one scholarship is to transfer. Would the other two scholarships that I got awarded, would I be able to take those with me since my need would increase?
Easy answer to that is yes. So that's the timing of awarding. So you have no unmet need now, we can't award you now because you'll just have to pay something back, which is why the whole reason we don't do unmet awards over unmet need is then the student just has to pay things back. So what will happen is as soon as the year is finished and August rolls around, you're eligible to receive all that funding. And the transfer one, once you send us.
Yes, of course.
Is there anyone else in the public that might have any questions? President Sanders.
Hi folks, if I could ask just a couple of questions, you know, this has been in the news. There's been a lot of fraud questions, it's been kind of highlight and it was great to hear. Congratulations, Marnie, that you have no, no students getting financial aid, no fake students getting financial aid. Is that also true at MJC, Aurelia?
Yes, we have not awarded financial aid to any potential fraud student.
That's amazing. With all the stuff on TV, it's amazing that you've done.
This is really important because there's people in Congress right now that are pushing on California as a system, saying that we are not behaving appropriately, we're not paying attention to this critical detail and our financial aid team and our IT team coupled together to make sure that that's going well. So congratulations.
And enrollment services.
And enrollment services, thank you very much. The other thing that's always been confusing to me is about the the need. So Gustavo, you you didn't have any more unmet need, but do you have any more like need for more resources to actually make it? Yeah.
I think he's a student, I'd say he does.
I know, and that's part of the point. But the point, I think, is that because our our fees are low, the level of financial need associated with that is low and that's good in the world of loans. You hear a lot about student repayment of loans, federal loans, those kinds of things. Our students, we're not doing many loans at all.
I would say it has been increasing. When we first started back in 1920, you gave out like maybe 10 loans. Currently, we're probably up to about 60 students requesting loans. And I think most of it has to do because we don't have the HERF funding anymore, which is the emergency funding that we were giving out. That was helping students a lot and that funding's gone now. And so there's a need to look for other sources to help pay for the tuition.
Out of 24,000 students, 60 students are getting a loan. That's a very small number and that's good because then they don't have to pay those loans back. But on the other hand, if the if the need level of our institution was higher, then there would be more bandwidth to give more of these scholarships without saying, hey, we have to wait another year. So those do compete against each other.
Can I address that real quick?
Yeah.
So when Aurelia and I make, when we work together with our cost of attendance, we are working off the Sears format that comes from California Student Aid Commission. We also have conversations back and forth about, we don't want to overprice YCCD classes in order to make sure that students who are shopping up and down the 99 corridor between Merced and Delta and MJC in Fresno, that we've got some extraordinary cost of attendance that's not going to bring them to our campus. So we do try to balance that as much as we can with what our actual student need is and still making ourselves marketable as a college.
As trustees, I would encourage you to to kind of continue your querying, your your understanding of this because our students' actual need is beyond what we're able to support them in. And if there's ways for us to reform our financial aid systems, it would be legislative, it would be a trustee representative role, working with state legislators, federal legislators to do something different that would support the whole student. You know, we know that student success metrics, students who are full time do better, but it's very, very hard for someone who's trying to feed their family to be a full time student. So with different regulations in place, there may be possibilities of supporting the student to not be a full time worker and instead invest in their education.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you very much for bringing that up with the financial aid concerns. I do know that there are some legislative changes coming down the pike. Our President Trump is trying to get away from SEOG funding and federal works funding. These are essential to student success, student completion, and anything that this board can do to help raise a voice as to what our students need, I I would be personally beyond grateful. Students survive on this money and we need them to survive to be able to continue to come and be educated and uplift our communities.
Any other questions from the board, comments?
I just want to thank you for, I've had a lot of questions. You did a fantastic job and you answered a lot of my questions. So thank you for your patience as you talked through and kind of guided me on this journey of understanding. I appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Some of the same people, 8.2, presentation, Columbia College Rising Scholars, Together We Rise. No, different people, welcome.
All right, so good evening, everybody. And thank you for the opportunity to share the progress and impact of Columbia College's Rising Scholars Program. I'm Michelle Walker, Director of External Initiatives, and I'm joined by James Coleman, facilitator of the Reimagining Myself program. Today, we'll walk you through how we support justice impacted students through education, reentry, and healing. So here's what we're going to cover today. We're going to give you an overview of our Rising Scholars staff, where we started and where we are now, key program services, locations, and funding, our new partnership with rehabilitation through the arts, and the outcomes that we're seeing. So our team is very small, but we're dedicated and we're passionate. I serve as program director, Kelsey Halsted, who's back here, and Nikki Coleman, she's back there as well, our program specialist. And then work directly with students based on last name caseloads. Their work ensures that students receive consistent individualized support throughout their academic and reentry journey. So we exist to close equity gaps for justice impacted students. Next slide, please. Students that are often left behind by traditional systems. So we focus on access to quality education, inclusion and treatment, basic needs resources, trauma informed teaching, and creating a learning environment that values the student voice and their lived experience. Next slide. So where we began. The program began in fall of 2015 with just 35 students and a few classes. It was primarily faculty led with minimal structure. By spring 2018, we hired our first program specialist, which was me. And in 2020, the External Initiatives Department was created, expanding the program's structure and outreach. Many thanks to Dr. Brian Sanders for helping with that effort. We were also responsible for dual enrollment as well. Next slide. Okay, so as of spring 2024, we added a dual enrollment director and that allowed External Initiatives to fully focus on Rising Scholars students. We were selected for the California Community College Chancellor's Office Vision 2030 Demonstration Project. So we're one of five colleges in California in carceral education that are weighing in on this demonstration project. And we now serve six locations, both in and out of custody. Next slide. Okay, so here are our six service locations. At Sierra Conservation Center, we have full degree offerings, both hybrid and online classes. At Velocido Conservation Camp, we have face to face cohort and hospitality. At Pine Grove and Motherlode Juvenile Facilities, we offer GE courses. And at Topeka County Jail, workshops and transition services. And on our campus, we have our Rising Scholars Center for students reentering or continuing post release. Next slide. So we provide robust academic and reentry support at our correctional institutions such as application and financial aid help, counseling, DSPS and tutoring, transition planning, online resources through a CDCR integrated canvas shell, and space for students to connect with staff and peers through forums and discussion boards. So this slide shows the degrees and certificates we currently offer to our Rising Scholar students inside correctional facilities, primarily Sierra Conservation Center. So every award we offer is aligned with the student's long term success, whether that means continuing education, meaningful employment, or building personal confidence and direction. These images are from one of the most meaningful milestones in our program, our graduation ceremony at Sierra Conservation Center. This is more than just a celebration of earning degrees or certificates. It's a powerful moment of recognition and dignity for our students, many of whom never imagined they'd walk in a cap and gown. SCC is our largest in custody education site and these graduates have put in the same level of academic work as students on our campuses, but often with greater obstacles. So they have limited internet access, restricted resources, and the emotional toll of incarceration. So for many, this is the first formal recognition of their achievements in their adult life. Their success is a testament not just to their hard work, but to what's possible when we believe in second chances and invest in systems that educate, not just incarcerate. We are incredibly proud of our students and they are proud of themselves, which might be the most powerful outcome of all. Next slide. So our On Campus Rising Scholars Center is designed as a safe supportive space where students can rebuild and belong. We offer book, food, and transportation support, emergency housing aid, school supplies, snacks, and workshops, art and healing circles, events, field trips, and they're all grounded in community building.
I have a, I have a quick question. You were talking about meaningful employment. Do you have any programs for the formerly incarcerated students to work on campus to get some work experience on their resumes?
So we employ a student worker that is justice impacted in our Rising Scholars Center. We currently don't have enough students on campus to really scale that very much. I think what's most important is that our counselor for our Rising Scholars understands some of the limitations that might exist with certain previous convictions and help guide them into pathways that they would be most successful on.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's see. At our On Campus Center, safe and supportive community building. Okay, so we're on to funding. We are currently funded by several grants. We recently received a grant renewal for our Rising Scholars Network Grant. We have a juvenile justice grant that supports youth focused services. And then we received a RITE 2.0 grant from CDCR that funds our partnership with rehabilitation through the arts. And it's important to note that Columbia College was the only college in California to be awarded that grant, which is pretty significant. Next slide. All right, so now we'll get into a little bit of the data. Here are some of the sections that we've offered. So you can see in 1516, we offered five classes. And now we're up to 62 actually plus, because I think we have about 27 to 30 slated for fall. So we've, we've kind of made the transition from face to face, fully correspondence during COVID, and then we've switched back from that. So now we're offering hybrid and online courses. This shift has expanded access, though it has also brought some challenges that we'll talk about in just a minute. Next slide, please. So here are the number of students served for the last few years. Our numbers continue to grow with the largest graduating class to date at SCC this spring of 36 students, which we're really proud about. As some of you might be aware, CDCR, just like a lot of other people, is experiencing some budget cuts in this fiscal year or next fiscal year. And while the details are still unfolding, we know that the funding within CDCR is being reduced, particularly in areas that affect in facility program coordination, access to technology in classroom space, and staffing for educational liaisons and support roles. And for Rising Scholars, this means that we will likely see less logistical and site based support from CDCR, even as demand for college programs inside continues to grow. So in practical terms, this could affect scheduling and security clearances for faculty, classroom availability and internet access, and partnerships with correctional education staff. So it's important to note that students still want these programs. In fact, demand continues to rise as word spreads about available degrees, support, and the positive outcomes of education during incarceration. But without adequate adequate support from CDCR operations, our ability to deliver consistent, high quality instruction may be strained.
Can I ask how much a scholarship is? Is it the same amount for everybody or?
A scholarship?
Yep, the money you give them for this.
We're not giving.
Isn't, isn't this a grant? Oh, okay.
Let's see. So this reality makes grant funding, institutional support, and community partnerships more important than ever as we work to sustain and protect educational access for one of the most underserved college populations in California. Next slide. So our success rates started dipping during COVID. And then especially when we moved to online classes. So in fall of 22 is when we introduced laptops to our students. A lot of our students have very little knowledge of technology. So we've been working really hard. I have worked extensively with CDCR for Wi-Fi upgrades so that they can access Wi-Fi. We've done a lot of laptop trainings and we've expanded our tutoring. And really, it's to help build confidence in them as a college student and to provide some consistency. Next slide. So now we're going to move on to rehabilitation through the arts. Next slide, please. So we've recently partnered with this organization that's a New York based nonprofit. They have, they agreed to pilot the program in California. So this is the first time it's been offered outside of the state of New York. Their model is about building human dignity through creativity. And with only 3% of their members returning to prison, it's one of the most effective reentry models in the country. Next slide. So we launched Reimagining Myself in fall 2024, thanks to the RITE 2.0 grant. and it's facilitated by James Coleman. This ten-week program helps students prepare for release through deep personal exploration. I'm going to let James take it over.
Thank you.
You actually look like there, that's good.
That's me. We got that off of our shoe, that's a pretty big headshot. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Trustees. I would first like to thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Reimagining Myself program that I'm currently facilitating at the Sierra Conservation Center. I would also like to thank Michelle Walker and the Rising Scholars Program at Columbia College for implementing this program and selecting me as the credible messenger that facilitates this curriculum. And lastly, I would like to thank Rehabilitation Through the Arts for developing Reimagining Myself, as well as Charles Moore and Kate Kenny for their ongoing support and guidance through this journey. A moment ago, I used the term credible messenger. For those of you who are not familiar with this term, credible messenger is a term used in restorative justice and prison reform work, is defined as a person who has formerly incarcerated themselves and returns to working inside with currently and formerly incarcerated individuals after their release. As I have experienced incarceration myself, I believe it is my shared lived experience that builds trust and forms a bond with these men who choose to participate in this program. I feel one of the most important aspects of Reimagining Myself and why it is successful is because it is a requirement that facilitators are credible messengers. This brings authenticity to the program and builds a rapport with the participants from its onset. Next slide, please. So as we can see on the slide here, these are some of the topics that are introduced during the program. It is, as she mentioned, twice a week, ten weeks. So we have, you know, dealing with emotions, reconnecting with others, stigma and rejection, stress management and self-care, parole basics, temptation, employment, adjusting to the world, health and communication, leaving behind the prison mindset, and the masks we wear. I could, next slide, please. While I could spend a great deal of time just speaking about the material covered throughout the program, what I would like to do instead is speak firsthand about what I have personally witnessed with these men during my time with them and share with you their words and their voices. I'll begin with the words of Angel Sanchez, who successfully completed the program in the pilot cohort in the fall of 2024 and chose to return to assist me with the second cohort as a classroom aide. Angel's planned release will be within the next two weeks. He will be attending Sacramento State in the fall of 2025. He writes, "I am thirty-three years old and have been incarcerated most of my life from the age of twelve with an eight-month period of freedom. Reimagining Myself is one of a, is a one-of-a-kind program. Through all my time of incarceration, I have never experienced a program such as this. This program has opened my eyes and the eyes of others and gave us a perspective that honestly none of us had before, which is the emotional part of reentry. While there are several reentry programs available, I have never participated in one like this. Learning how to deal with situations that will most likely occur upon reentry is a vital tool for all. The activities that are required in the group get incarcerated, incarcerated individuals like myself and many others out of our comfort zone and break the stigma of us being institutionalized. This program works. It also provides a space where many of us can, many of us can take off the masks we wear on these prison yards and be ourselves. Thanks to our credible messenger, a man that was previously incarcerated, a man that has experienced what many of us are going through and adapted to society with a forward action positivity, this wouldn't be as effective without him. His insight and energy are what makes this program possible." And I know while Angel is not here with us and doesn't have the opportunity to hear this, it would, it would be a great deal to him. So this program makes an impact because the participants are allowed to be in a space where their voices are truly heard by myself and the other gentlemen in the room. It is a safe space. Reimagining Myself focuses on the issues and obstacles that formerly incarcerated individuals will face upon their reentry. As we just saw, parole, employment, reuniting with family, stigma and rejection are just a few things that these men will have to navigate upon their, upon their release. This program encourages these men to start thinking about how they will approach these difficult situations and triggers before they are released and provides them with the tools necessary to successfully overcome the obstacles they will certainly face in the future. This forward-thinking approach is crucial for a person being released from prison. Being able to develop a plan and acquire the socio-emotional tools needed for reentry puts these men in a position to not only succeed, but also avoid returning to a correctional facility. We just finished, I recently completed the second cohort at SEC. And actually, yesterday, we had our celebration ceremony, which was amazing. During my time facilitating the first cohort, I witnessed ten strangers walk into a room not knowing anything about one another. They quickly formed a bond, learned to authentically trust one another, and leave into the sense of community. As some of you may know, incarcerated men tend to self-segregate due to familiarity or feel safer in what can be a hostile environment. To see a room of men with different ethnicities and beliefs build friendships with one another and form a positive community that supports one another inside these walls is one of the most impactful things I have seen during my time as a facilitator. And I would like to add that this is not something that's written into their curriculum. This is just occurs on its own naturally. Lastly, I would like to speak about the change in perspective that the participants developed during their time in Reimagining Myself. Next slide, please. So these are the, the program outcomes. I'll let you guys all kind of read them for yourselves, but I can certainly testify to the fact that I have seen all of these become a result of this programming throughout the process. So it does work, and it's one of the most amazing things that I've seen. Most participants come into this program with a preconceived notions about what parole will be like or how the stigma and rejection that formerly incarcerated people face will affect them when they go home, when they go home. To see their perspective on these topics change and getting to witness their personal growth firsthand is without a doubt one of the most rewarding aspects of this work. I am truly fortunate to be a part of their growth and change as they reimagine themselves and become the person they were destined to be. I cannot stress enough how remarkable it is that Columbia College is courageously venturing into a space, into the space of reentry. Higher education is undoubtedly one of the most impactful, impactful factors of recidivism. However, to go one step further and offer students not only the opportunity to obtain a college degree while incarcerated, but also parallel programming that tackles the heavy, stressful, and uncertain experiences these men will face when they go home. That is something we should all be very proud of. Not many higher education institutions, to my knowledge, are taking on this critical work of supporting educational opportunities with reentry and transitional services. Without both, students can easily fall back into harmful cycles once they leave prison. I want to thank Columbia College and YCCD for investing in this reentry program that is the first of its kind in the state of California. I would like to conclude my presentation with the words of Robert Chavez, who completed this program and obtained his certificate in the first cohort. Breaking the chains that bound me to my past bitterness was a long journey. I learned that true freedom is not freedom from temptation or freedom from prison. True freedom is having the power to stop doing things that get us into trouble. One of the primary differences between adults and kids is the ability to act on reason instead of emotional feelings. For me, attaining the freedom to become someone different meant that I had to make a choice not to follow my own anger and bitterness. I had to ignore my inner voice saying, "You are worthless", and replace it with an empowering voice saying, "You are worthwhile." I didn't do it alone. My journey towards freedom started with my decision to join Reimagining Myself and to meet appropriate friends instead of associating with the tough guys who encouraged me to teach others respect by force. I chose to accept the help of people who taught me positive ways to handle anger the correct way. We empower ourselves when we follow the road to freedom instead of getting caught in the revolving door of our past. Listening to, to people who believe in our abilities helps us to find the power within ourselves to do better. This class and its credible messenger have helped me create good decision-making skills and turn negative consequences into positive outcomes. And thank you for letting Robert's voice be heard. And thank you all again for giving me the space and the time to speak about something that I so, I hold so very close to my heart. And yeah, if time allows.
Thank you so much for your time. Do you guys have any questions?
Darren, Darren has a question.
So real quick. So Rising Scholars, is it open to anyone incarcerated? Let's say it's Sierra Conservation Center.
They have to meet certain, they have a point system based on behavior and things like that. So they get vetted first by the prison to make sure that they're in appropriate points. And then, and they have to have their high school completion, and then they can move on into the college program.
Well, wait a minute, not done yet. Okay, oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Has there been any, is there enough data yet to, to, to look at how successful our outcomes are as far as people that have been, you know, either served their time and released or they're out on parole and they're, and they're succeeding out in the community? Has there been enough time to collect that data yet?
I would say, so I've asked this question of the state chancellor's office several times when I'm doing certain reports, and there's not enough yet. Although there is compelling evidence that higher education helps with their behavior and things like that, right? So there are less conflicts, the students are more motivated. And if you ask some of the faculty who work inside and outside, they'll say that the guys on the inside are some of the best students that they have because they do have, they know how fortunate they are to have that. And if they have behavioral issues or things like that, they get removed. So they, they understand what there is to lose.
Yeah. Didn't I hear something about a low recidivism rate for this program that you were talking about? Like three percent?
Rehabilitation Through the Arts.
How long has that tracked for?
Twenty-eight years they've been running that organization.
Great. I'm sorry, Darren.
No, I just want to say that, that I want to thank you both for the work that you're doing. And I want to thank you for what you've overcome and, and investing yourself back into the program and, and learning and, and passing on what you've learned to others. That's a huge accomplishment, and I want to thank you for that. You know, they call it the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. It, it's not that simple. I started my career in, in corrections, and people have this idea that, oh, well, if, you know, you just get in there and there's these programs. And my wife was a, finished her career as a twenty-plus years as a probation officer and worked with a lot of people. It's not that simple. You're, you're really having to get people that really you are habilitating them because they've come from a background where you're starting from scratch. So it's much harder than just saying, well, if you just take the time and, and learn the right things to do and rehabilitate yourself. You know, what you guys do is extremely difficult. You're putting a lot of time and effort in it, and I think if people took more time to understand it and appreciate it, they would be applauding like I am. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Big, is on a very large vacation. Be nice if I turn my mic on. Academic resports, Professor Angel.
Good evening, trustees and chancellor. By the way, Professor Choi does send regards, and I look forward to working with him. Just going to set this right here if I can. Yeah, so I'm very excited to get started in my year as Columbia's Academic Senate President. This is my second time, although I think, other than Dr. Sanders, nobody would know that. I don't, I think it would be all new faces. I'm sorry, Leslie, you would have remembered that. So I'm excited. I was just reflecting earlier today, the difference in issues between the last time I served and now. And there's, there's always some, some negative issues to deal with, I suppose, and some positive. And so I'm already sort of trying to brainstorm how to overcome some of the negative things at Columbia. And maybe I'll pinpoint some of that as I go down my report here. I will let you know that so far, some of my long-term goals for Columbia is to strengthen the Senate's voice about participatory governance. And we're going to include that as a topic at the faculty retreat in August. So that'll be one of our long-term goals. And of course, no surprise, Columbia needs to have a, a shot in the arm, a more positive environment at Columbia. And so how do I, how do I plan on helping that situation? Well, for one thing, I plan on being an active voice for the Senate. I hope that for those of you who don't know me, you'll find that I'm a reasonable person, but I'm a very staunch advocate as well. And so I plan to meet with a lot of people as much as I can, as much as you'll have me, and make my, you know, voice my concerns, give accolades when it's due, those kinds of things. But, so that's, that's one of the ways. But going to what Dr. Tran said earlier, kind of, I kind of chuckled at the fact I'm using this because I'm an automotive teacher. Her statement earlier was, "We need to continue to serve as the engines for student opportunities." So automotive engines, right? And so I would add on top of that, the way we beef up those engines, right? Get more horsepower out of them, is to have faculty who, who have high morale, who trust, and who are included. I think that's the key to beefing up those engines of opportunity. And I guess that really sums up how I look forward next year to try to promote faculty interest next year. I also, I wanted to do this about a year ago, but other issues on our campus kind of got in the way. I want to bring an awareness and maybe advocacy as a result of Columbia's trends in FON numbers, faculty obligation numbers. I plan on sort of confirming or maybe fine-tuning more our data, our historical data at Columbia. But I'll, I'll tell you, the cursory results is for the past twenty, twenty-five years, maybe a little bit longer, we've had an increase in FTS. And by the way, I was hired in ninety-seven, so I kind of use that as the benchmark going forward. We've had a significant increase in faculty FTS, a reduction in full-time faculty, right, it's right there. And administrative positions. I don't want to overexaggerate, three times as much, four times as much as far as faculty positions. So I plan on bringing an awareness to that. And perhaps, I haven't gotten this far yet, I might want to advocate that we need more full-time faculty positions beyond what the fifty percent rule requires us to do. I haven't got that far yet, but just giving you a little insight, right? The preview of what, what I may be wanting to talk to you about. Currently, I'm working on our faculty retreat. Again, it's August fifteenth. For the first time, we have some budgeting for that. We've never had a budget for a faculty retreat. And so we'll be making a meeting at the Black Oak Event Center. We're pretty excited about that, having the technology. We will have, in fact, Trevor just agreed to join us to talk about FON numbers and help us with that smart part of that discussion, right? We have another guest speaker joining by Zoom, so we're, we're pretty excited for, for that as a first opportunity in our faculty retreat. Working on various projects already, we've hit the ground running since the semester ended with our Senate President-elect Rebecca Rogers. Very talented counselor, faculty member, very thrilled to have her as my, my partner with the Senate. Also excited to work with our new Academic Senate Executive Also excited to work with our new Academic Senate Executive Committee, which consists of Rebecca Rogers, our President-elect, Market Wisnet, our past president, Dr. Stephanie Guzman, our co-curriculum chair, Adrian Weston, our co-curriculum chair, Lana Von Heppes, our faculty representative to the College Council, Dr. Joe Manlove, our YFA representative at large, and Tori Weaver, our part-time representative to the Academic Senate Executive Council. Very talented group, looking forward to that. Also looking forward to working with my faculty colleagues off-campus, Giselle. I haven't had, I haven't had a chance to know that much. We've been on policies and procedures together. I look forward to getting to know Giselle better and working with her this year. Steve Choi, thrilled to work with him again. Him and I had served as YFA grievance officers together in a very busy time. Him and I had spent many hours on the phone, 10, 11, 12 at night, you know, kind of comparing notes and helping each other out. And so look forward to working with him again. And then Op, of course, him and I had served on YFA together, so looking forward to working with you. And like I said earlier in my, my report here, I look forward to reaching out to many people, trustees, Dr. Tran, already reached out to Brian, I do that so often, but recently. Thank you for that budget information and ideas and I just, I just do that. So I guess you have the option of not answering or hanging up on me if, if that gets too much. But for the trustees, particularly this summer, I do plan on reaching out and inviting you out for coffee or lunch, whatever it is, as your time allows and getting to know you. I know some of you already, but I'd love to get to the rest of you and even better. So to that, I, I look forward to a busy year, building relationships that foster good things for the, for Columbia's Academic Senate. And last comment I'd like to make is regarding Chancellor Young. So Chancellor, you and I have worked on two, I guess, significant, in two significant ways. One was when I served on the YFA as a negotiator and vice president. A little bit of tumultuous times, I think, to say the least, back when we went through the strike and everything. And I think as our chancellor, you were in a very tough position. And I, I think you handled yourself with great aplomb, given the circumstances. And so I'll always remember that part of you. And on a more, more positive note, very, very proud that I worked with you on meeting with the mother lode, school superintendents to get the C cap courses in high gear. I really appreciate you including me in that whole project. And I'm going to miss you as our chancellor. I hope we stay in touch, host YCCD. And that's it.
Thank you.
Hear the music going, but I think my time is up.
You were a little long, but we allowed it and we, and we won't take away Professor Flores's time, but thank you. Next, Modesto Junior College Academic Senate, Professor Flores.
All right. Good evening Chancellor Young and trustees. I am joining you this evening after a day spent engaging in collaborative professional development with faculty and classified professionals. It was a great opportunity to connect and grow in our ability to be warm demanders for each other and for our students. It was disappointing, I have to bring to your attention, that we have two deaf full-time faculty and we reached out to try to get them interpreters and we were not successful. So this is a huge district problem and opening ourselves up to tremendous liability. So other colleges have, and districts have a process for how to access interpreters. And so we really need to review that because these two faculty ended up not being able to attend. So that was really disappointing.
Has this happened before?
Yes. One of our full-time faculty has been here for over a year and it continues to happen. It has been an eventful couple of months on our campus as we celebrated the accomplishments of our students. Graduation was packed this year. Thank you trustee Garrett for being there to celebrate with us. Your presence was noted and appreciated. And I'm sorry that I had to push you away a couple of times to hug my students up there. So thank you for that. Chancellor Young, I am glad you're feeling better. We missed you at graduation and I'm glad you're here so that I can personally say thank you for the work that you've done as chancellor. Not only do you hold a really challenging position, but I don't think everyone knows just how kind you are. You've always accepted my invitation to meet. And not only do you insist on paying for my meal, but you also make sure I take food home for my daughter. So she also says she will miss you and I really do wish you the best of luck in whatever the future holds for you. So thank you for that. We also have another transition in leadership happening in our Senate. Professor Alan McKissick, who has served as the faculty lays onto the board since at least I've been faculty at MJC. He is no longer serving in that position. I remember starting in the Senate and being just awestruck by how he had board policy memorized and every board policy. And so I just want to let him know that his service is appreciated. And we look forward to welcoming Steve Choi as the incoming faculty lays onto the board. I would also like to thank Gustavo for his service as a trustee. I'm inspired by his commitment to service and I'm honored to now call him my colleague. Is he still here? Yeah, there you are. Okay. We ended the semester having passed our MJC Equity Plan, Resolution SP 25A, and recognition of Dolores Huerta on April 10th, for which I will now read the resolved statements. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Modesto Junior College Academic Senate formally acknowledges and commemorates April 10th, 2025 as Dolores Huerta Day and encourages faculty, staff, and students to participate in educational and celebratory activities that honor Huertas' enduring legacy. And be it further resolved that the Modesto Junior College Academic Senate supports ongoing programming and curricular engagement that highlight the contributions of labor leaders, civil rights activists, and change makers whose lives inspire generations to act with courage, compassion, and a commitment to justice. Lastly, I will reiterate the growing faculty concern with the process that led to the selection of someone with multiple votes of no confidence as the interim chancellor. MJC Senate passed a letter of support for Columbia College Academic Senate Resolution FA 24C, vote of no confidence in Columbia College President Lena Tran. And the letter reads, Board of Trustees, on December 5th, 2024, the Academic Senate of Modesto Junior College convened and cast their vote to stand in solidarity with our esteemed colleagues at Columbia College regarding their vote of no confidence in President Lena Tran. Assistant institutions within the Yosemite Community College District, the choices made by one college's leadership frequently ripple through the experiences of the other. Upon discovering the repeated endeavors of Columbia College faculty to address the challenges arising from the president's lack of transparency and collegiality, MJC Academic Senate is concerned about the absence of a substantial response from the district and the board. We strongly urge the board to respond to these raising, these concerns raised by the faculty, classified professionals, and students of Columbia College. Ignoring these concerns will only lead to greater distrust between this district and its constituents. These issues must be addressed with expediency professionally, the Academic Senate of Modesto Junior College. As you can imagine, there will likely be a lot of surprised and concerned faculty as they learn of Dr. Tran's appointment today after the Senate actions at Columbia College and our Senate's action in support of them. I'd like to invite you, Dr. Tran, to any future Senate meetings which are posted on our website to address some of these concerns directly. I would like to say this concludes my report, but I also would like to bring to attention, if trustee Aguilar is attending via 2449, his votes have not counted this evening because his camera isn't even on. Now this concludes my report.
Next is Leadership Team Advisory Council, LTAC President Samantha McCarthy. Welcome.
Good evening, board members, President Richards, and Chancellor Young. Leadership team members, we're happy to be part of the large commencement ceremonies on May 2nd with 193 graduates at Columbia College and 862 graduates at Modesto Junior College. We want to thank the board members, vice chancellors, and Chancellor Young for attending along, to celebrate alongside us. The leadership team had a successful gathering on May 6th with a small number, but 15 members in attendance. It was an opportunity to talk to other leadership team members and discuss current issues. We are going to be planning another event in August. On May 22nd, the LTAC reps will have a full-day working meeting with HR to update our current handbook. The evaluation section will be our main focus, but the entire handbook will be reviewed. We hope to make great progress after that day. As LTAC president, I will be working with the H, with HR on some summer professional development opportunities for our leadership. This concludes the LTAC report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Yosemite Faculty Association, the new president, Optimus One. You know I'm going to be telling transformer jokes. I mean, I know it's not good, but.
Bring him on, Neil. Come on, buddy. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chairperson Richards, and Chancellor Young. My name is Optimism One, AKA Op. I'm an MJC graduate and now a full-time English professor here for the last 20 years. Happy and grateful to be addressing you this evening in my first report as the Yosemite Faculty Association President. I'm also happy and grateful for Chancellor Henry Young and his many years of excellent service to our district. The road to a successful, stable institution is not always a straight line and Chancellor Young has led us through several challenging times. But I can confidently say that he is now leaving us better off than when he arrived, which is why I want to thank him by presenting him with a plaque from YFA. Also, with the announcement of Lena Tran as our incoming interim chancellor, I want to first acknowledge the Academic Senate's concerns. I hear those concerns and I respect their positions. With that said, I want to welcome Dr. Tran to her new position and I look forward to working with her, you, to make the Yosemite Community College District even better than it now is. May we all let go of the past so we can, so we can focus on what we can control now for the greater good of the YCCD. Finally, I want to address YFA's ongoing negotiations with the district team. YFA has operated with the understanding that there is an urgency to train, implement, and evaluate RSI, Regular Substantive Interaction. This feeling of urgency has been validated by many conversations I've had with MJC leadership and with faculty. My hope then is that the Board of Trustees will give the district's negotiation team the encouragement and license to do whatever it takes to come to an agreement with YFA and soon. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your service. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on, we're the Classified Senate Activity Reports. Abby Sunday? Not here, okay. Is Amanda Cannon here?
I dressed up for you today. I came from the very first Faculty Classified Professional Development Day ever in history of MJC. It's very exciting, but I threw a jacket on, so we're very official.
Is the t-shirt kind of special?
Yeah, it says MJC Classified Senate and our PR media people are.
And we didn't, and we didn't get one, why?
You have to come to our meetings. I will make sure you.
Okay, very good.
Okay, hey, I'm, I'm down. You can come to our meetings anytime as well. I wanted to say good evening, sorry, I got really excited first of all. Good evening, thank you for letting me come and visit you tonight. We just had our graduation, everyone's talked about it. What may not be easy to see behind the scenes is all the classified staff that volunteer their time to make it happen. We've got grounds people, we've got admissions and records people checking people in. Carrying campus set up a table outside of the check-in. We had 863 students come through our check-in line at different varying intervals and they had, needed bobby pins for their hats. They needed, they needed stuff, they needed people to care. I was one of the people that was crowd control, I was also a traffic cone, but that's fine. And when we had the opportunity to ask these students, what's, what's the plan? You must be so proud of yourself. So that interaction, that excitement, I also got named type person, which was a mistake and probably won't happen again, but it was really fun. I got some great pictures I can share with you next time. Which takes me to the conversation that we had last time, last month, about getting to open up a mode of communication with classified and which I suggested maybe a classified liaison to the board. There was some interest showed in that. I'd like to put myself out there to find out if you're still interested, we'd love to discuss next steps or potentially a new road forward that has not yet been traveled. We're excited about that. We spent this summer looking to plan for our goals for next year. Communication came out as a huge goal out of our day-to-day, classified faculty. And one of the things that we was heard around all the tables, there was 16, is that communication and collaboration builds trust. Trust is something that we all need to be able to have to go forward. And maybe that will be one of the Classified Senate's goals next year is to build communication and trust with all constituency groups and build those relationships. We see the value in that. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
So at this point, Modesto Junior College does not have an AS president, but we do have a written report from the Columbia Senate that will enter into the record. So with that, Chancellor Young.
Thank you.
By the way, if I could hold one second, I think trustee Aguilar, trustee Aguilar, are you there?
So there was, there was a question whether he was attending via AB 2449. He is not. It is through the old Brown Act.
Yes, I am.
So.
Do we want to have him re-vote just in case or is that necessary?
No, it's not.
Okay. Thank you, Antonio. You don't have to re-vote.
It doesn't give me any options to turn any camera on.
Okay, thank you, Antonio. We, we got you recorded.
All right.
Good evening. I'd like to call on Dr. Tran to share with us a report from Columbia College.
Thank you, Chancellor Young. Good evening, everyone. Again, Columbia College has a record high of graduation. We literally ran out of parking spaces. We have to really think about how we're going to get everybody there. It was a great celebration, everybody had fun, so thank you truly. It was hard work for putting all the pieces together. So we want to recognize the graduation team committee and everyone who volunteered. We also have a great activities coming up, which is the AI Forum next Wednesday, May 21, of 21st. And every day we are getting increased number in attendance. Right now, we're looking at 268, so we have to move the venue to the theater. So yes, look there. But I have to say, we cannot do this, Brian, myself, and the team without the leadership of Emily Lawrence. So we really want to acknowledge that. And Brian will do some fun stuff with AI when, in his report. So please, hope you can join us. We have faculty expert in the area, we have community members, we have company Apple, Microsoft, Gala, you know, you name it, everybody's going to be there, as well as the chancellor of the, our chancellor, state chancellor. Eric, so I really wanted to say thank you for hosting that meeting, what we had last week. It was between the executive committee members of the Academic Senate and our admin team. It was a wonderful two hours. It was a wonderful two hours of engaging, productive, and really setting goals of what would be for Columbia the incoming year. So I thank you for that and continue to look forward to those meetings. And likewise, Giselle, thank you so much because when you say, "Please come, check out our Senate, hear our voice," because I understand that. It's really hard when you hear noise or you read something, but to not be able to comment on things, not to be able to say anything. And I so look forward to that role, to attend. My commitment is if my schedule is available, I will be at the Senate meetings, because that's what I want to do. I want to be able to start building, like we all talk about, we want to build trust. We're doing something that is so significant. We are affecting 25,000 student lives that we touch every single day. That is a job that I do not take lightly, and it is also a responsibility that myself or the board cannot do it alone. We need you, and we will be here. I will be here, so I promise. Let me know, we'll come, we'll talk, and we're both here in the summer. So I think if we can start that conversation, that would be great. So thank you for that opportunity, truly. Then also, the Columbia, we have been very busy with our Go Columbia days, right? We're growing. Now our high school students are coming on campus, checking out. We're growing record high in enrollment, so great things are happening, so we're happy about that. And then lastly, I want to say, Chancellor Young, I always get so emotional. But we go back on the old way, you know? When I was a dean, so to keep it short, you have always been a great mentor, a guidance, a support, I mean, a silent one, but I know you're always there. So I truly appreciate that, and I would truly need your support, help as we move into the next, you know, what is for YCCD. So thank you, Chancellor Young, for all that you do for the district. And that's my report, everyone.
Dr. Sanders?
Thank you. Oh, well, good evening. I placed my report, my written report, which I failed to include in the packet that Graciela distributed over the weekend on your desk. It's 21 pages, mostly pictures, but descriptions of the multitude of activities at MJC over the past month. And I also included a copy of the newsletter from the School of Science, Engineering, and Mathematics, which came by my desk. But I also want to encourage you to review the email that Dr. Wilson sent out. It was called Student Services Spring Newsletter. She just went through all of the things that the Student Services team has done over this year, and it's truly immense. I started going down, and it just kept going. I didn't print it because it would have been more than 21 pages. So instead of even attempting to highlight all these events, I really want to take the time to give credit where credit is due for their success. And it's the people of Modesto Junior College whose passion and their professionalism and expertise has brought each of these events to life. Our team knows our students as individuals, they care for them, they help them thrive and succeed, and they celebrate their successes. And without the contribution of each classified professional, each faculty member, each leadership team member, and each member of our outstanding student government as well, none of this could have happened. So on behalf of all of our graduates and program completers, I share my heartfelt thanks to all of you for the work that you've done and your contributions to the success of our students. Well done. However, I would be remiss if I didn't share just a little bit about graduation and celebration season that we've been through. So to that end, I've decided to stretch myself as a mathematician and instead share a poem about it. "Spring at MJC." In golden light, in golden light of spring's array, Modesto bloomed in early May. The campus stirred with proud delight as goals once distant came in sight. Caps flew high and gowns were worn, with every cheer new dreams were born. The quad had echoed heartfelt cheers, a journey shaped by work in years. In quiet halls, a pin was placed, a nurse stood tall, her fears erased. The pinning marked a sacred vow to heal, to serve, to honor now. Certificates clutched tight in hand, proof of skill and effort planned. In every trade, each crafted line, electric sparks or engines whine. Families gathered, tears held tight, proud eyes shining through the night. From GED to transfer dreams, each path had joined the broader stream. MJC had shined beneath the sun, a place where many paths begun. Through laughter, effort, and belief, we closed a chapter, brief but deep. Pretty good, yeah? I didn't write it. I didn't write.
I think the poet laureate is safe, but that was good.
In honor of.
Well done, ChatGPT.
In honor of the AI Forum next Wednesday, I asked ChatGPT to write it, and here's how that conversation went, I thought I'd share with you. I said, "Help me write a poem that talks about Modesto Junior College graduation season, the associated celebrations, pinning ceremonies, and certificate completion events," to which ChatGPT responded in about one second, "Sure, here's a poem that captures the spirit of graduation season at Modesto Junior College, including the celebrations, pinning ceremonies, and certificate completion events." Now, what I shared with you was almost what it spit out in that first iteration, but it was written in the future tense about graduation that was about to occur, and of course, we're looking in the past. So I said to them, "Oh, and it talked about ivy-covered walls, right, of institutions." Our facilities team is quite glad. We don't have ivy-covered walls. It also talked about this weird, odd line that said, "For every door now has a door." Now, maybe Op can explain what that means, but I couldn't. So I said to the ChatGPT, I said, "Shift the poem to past tense and replace that last stanza because we don't have ivy-covered walls or doors with doors." So ChatGPT said, "Absolutely, here's a revised version of the poem, shift it to the past tense, and now a closing stanza that better reflects Modesto Junior College." Now, that was a better version, but I realized that the first stanza said, "A rite of passage late in June," which is not correct. So I said, "Hey, shift it to May." So here's what I said, "Adjust the first stanza to reflect graduation in early May instead of late June and replace those last two lines. Certainly, here's the revised poem with the first stanza updated to May and a new ending stanza." So that's what I read to you. And it was an amazing experience. And if you have no idea what I'm talking about, then I encourage you to go on May 21st at approximately 9:15 for the opening session of the AI Forum at MJC, which was going to be in forum room 110, and is now going to be in the auditorium. But before I close my remarks, I wanted to say thank you to our facilities team, because just last week, we had our weekly meeting, our monthly meeting with them, and we looked at the team and said, "Oh, my gosh, we all went to this event and forum, and the chairs were falling over, the welds were broken, these things are destroyed." And they said, "We're going to have our team on it." And they were in there on their hands and knees welding, got this thing all fixed up and looking good, and we are going to use it for the breakout sessions, so the work was not wasted. Thank you very much for those efforts. Questions?
You have heard about commencement from the college presidents. I want to add to it, and I specifically want to recognize the folks who helped put it together at both colleges. The faculty, the administrators, and of course, the classified staff. Specifically, I want to draw your attention to the folks who carried out their duties and never asked to be recognized. These are the folks from facilities. And when you talk about the folks from facilities, think about the preparation that has to go into it, and then the cleanup. Our custodial staff, I want to recognize them, and our ground staff for the cleanup. So I just want to be sure, as we celebrated the event, we do remember the folks who helped in the background, right? And not forgetting, of course, security. I am pleased to announce that the Classified School Employees Week is from May 18 to 24. And so for this week, there will be a time for us to recognize the work and the contribution of classified staff. It will begin on Monday, the 19th, 11:30 AM to 12:30 PM, starting at Columbia College, Upper Menzanita. The next day, on the 20th, from 8:30 to 9:30 AM, Library, MJC East. And then in the afternoon, same day, May 20th, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM, the YCCD District Office in the room next door. And then, that evening, at 8:30 PM, the custodial break rooms, the security break rooms, the MJC East and West break rooms. So we hope that the classified staff would accept our simple token of appreciation and recognition for the work that you do that we seldom thank you for. On that note, it is my pleasure to talk about the Classified Employee of the Year Award. Sometime back, you received emails asking for solicitation, recommendation, nominations, and those were all reviewed. I am pleased to announce that the Classified Employee of the Year is Jacqueline Wingett, Senior Administrative Secretary, Arts, Humanities, and Communications. And the Board is pleased to honor Jacqueline Wingett as the 2025 YCCD Classified Employee of the Year.
You know you have to say a few words. Before you get your plaque, you have to say a few words.
Do I really? Thank you. I'm going to get emotional. So I was a student here at MJC. I was a technical theater major. I did not know I was a theater major. I started out in the ag department, and I wanted to design costumes. And I went to a counselor, and they're like, "Uh, well, you should go into theater." And I was like, "What's that?" And so I made my way over to the auditorium, which I had the pleasure of being in for, I think, a semester, and then it was demoed. So I was one of the lucky students that got to experience doing theater on the West Campus. But I had some great mentors here at MJC. Annie Shanto, Lori Burney, and Mike Sunquist were my fairies of college and got me through. And I transferred to Long Beach. I was there for two years, worked at Disneyland for five years. Met my husband, we got married, and then I was like, "I want to go back to Turlock." And so he, my husband, took a chance and moved back here to the Central Valley, and I was here for about a year. And then some of my friends at MJC called and said, "Hey, there's an opening. You really need to apply." And I had already applied at the library a few times and kept striking out. And so I applied for the administrative assistant position in the, well, we weren't at school, the arts division office, and I got it. It was an incredibly nerve-wracking interview because I didn't know it was a panel. I thought I was just meeting with Mike. And so I didn't know until Rita was like, "No, these people are on." I was like, "Oh, my God." I was so nervous, I cried in the interview from nerves. And so when Mike called me and offered me the job, I was like, "Mike, you do not have to hire me. That was the worst interview." And he's like, "Jacqueline, we know your work ethic. It's okay, like, we know you're a hard worker, like, please come work here." So this is my 10-year anniversary of being here. This is my happy place on earth. Every day, I don't feel like I'm coming to work. I tell my kids, "I'm going to school." I still tell my mom, "I'm off to school." So I really love working here. My coworkers, Ashley and Cassie, they are my sisters. We were at the Senate, the training today in the MSR, and we were so emotional going through these prompts together about how we have all grown and have watched each other grow. And how long have you been here, Cassie? Six years? Six years. We've recognized that in ourselves, and I think it's a strong, you know, dedication to MJC, and Cassie was an MJC student. And we build each other up, and we are here for the students. We love our students, we love our faculty. So I was shocked when I got your email, Chancellor. I emailed Graciela back, I'm like, "Is this a joke? This can't be, because I've looked at that application to do it for other people, and it is very daunting." I was like, "Who in their right mind did this?" And so my boss, Rob Stevenson, he was like, "No, like, you deserve it." And I was like, "Oh, my God." So thank you very much. I'm very honored, and I share it with my peers, and thank you.
Hey, Jacqueline. Hi. Jacqueline. 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 Were we at Turlock FFA together?
I emailed you. I said, "Hey, Jenny, do you remember Jacqueline Pombo? That's me."
That's so awesome. Congratulations.
Next, I want to recognize, excuse me, Gustavo Estrehan, First, our field and trustee.
Would you like to say anything?
So just like President Sanders, I wrote up something real quick and then had ChatGPT revise it for me. But I kind of want to give you a little preview, a little sample of my graduation speech. So as I mentioned to some of the trustees, real quick, I talked about tacos, all right? Yes, I talked about tacos at graduation, but I love a good analogy, right? So let me read what ChatGPT helped me. Let me read what ChatGPT helped me, you know, cook up here, okay?
Professor Flores, would this be an F for using ChatGPT? How is the faculty weighed in on this? Okay.
Okay. So I want to begin by thanking the Board of Trustees, our college presidents, vice chancellors, Graciela and Kimberly, for giving me the, and everyone who gave me the opportunity to speak and advocate on behalf of students, whether it was about improving resources, services, or any issue that I could help for our student community. And a special thank you goes to the students of MJC, their ASMJC, and the student body as a whole. Your strong voices and willingness to communicate allowed me to support you in the best way I could during my term. Serving as a student trustee has surely been an honor, a privilege, and if, this is ChatGPT, I messed up, but if you were at MJC's graduation, I'm going to just roll with it, you may have heard me talk about tacos, and I meant it. My time as a student trustee has been a lot like building the perfect taco. I was fortunate enough to have had a solid foundation, which is the tortilla. My journey and my experiences were the filling, and the most important part to me is a good salsa. That's bold, that's spicy, unforgettable, that's the best part. And that's also the passion, the determination, and the dedication that I was able to bring to this board, to the students, and hopefully I inspired more students so that we can have more student trustees, so that we can have more student body presidents, and so on and so forth. So as I step away from this role, I hope we continue moving towards a second student trustee position. This role is incredibly rewarding, but as I often say, it's a lot of dip on the chip, and that was me. To the next student trustee, or any student stepping into a leadership position, always remember, you are a student before. you are a student before anything else, whether that's student worker, student body president, student trustee. And these are words from my mentor, Hector Duarte, who will be retiring in like two or three weeks. But always remember to lead with your heart, stay grounded, and never forget why you started here at MJC, or Columbia, or why you are here in a role to represent the students, or anybody in terms of faculty, staff, and et cetera. And I look forward to still being part of YCCD as a staff now. I've had my, you know, fair share of these last two weeks, learning the new role. It's been fun. Just as mentioned before, I'm now an Admin Secretary for EOPNS. So it's a full circle, and I look forward to it. Thank you, all of you. Yep.
He's not here, but I want to, uh, recognize the contribution of, uh, uh, Faculty Liaison to the Board, Alan McKissick. So we have a, uh, photo that we wanna share with you. Thank you. I also want to recognize Amanda Cannon for her service to the District Council. And I have a plaque for you.
Chancellor, just stay there. Chancellor, stay there, please. Chancellor, stay there. Stay there. Eight point fives, travel reports in your packet. At this time, I'd like all my fellow trustees, including Gustavo and the two campus presidents, to join me down there so we can recognize Chancellor Young. Not really English down there.
Uh, and do you want me to read what's on the agenda? Okay. So on the plaque, it reads, Dr. Henry C. V. Young, Chancellor. In recognition, thank you for your years of dedication and service to the Yosemite Community College District. And on the agenda, it reads, Dr. Henry Jang Vu Young began his tenure as Chancellor of the Yosemite Community College District on July one, 2017, following a unanimous vote of the Board. Throughout his nine-year tenure, Dr. Young has strengthened relationships between the colleges and the broader community, championed expansion of dual enrollment with, within the district, led the district through times of uncertainty and challenge, including the COVID-19 pandemic, managing a faculty strike, leading through presidential transitions, and doing so consistently with integrity, compassion, and a clear focus on the well-being and success of students. The Board of Trustees recognizes Dr. Henry C. V. Young's lasting contribution as a loyal and committed Chancellor of the Yosemite Community College District. Board President Richards, would you like me to read the letter? That was received.
Yes, please.
From Modesto, uh, Mayor, City of Modesto Mayor, Sue Zuelin. Congratulations on your retirement. You have done so much during your career. It is inspiring to know someone with such strive and determination. Your contributions to our community have been immeasurable, from creating roadmaps for students to access college-level education, expanding dual enrollment programs, and leading staff and students through the uncertainty of the COVID-19 pandemic. Your accomplishments will leave an indelible mark. In addition to your achievements as Chancellor, you have demonstrated remarkable resilience and ambition. To move to a new country is no easy feat, and I admire your strength and tenacity that got you to where you stand today. Congratulations again on an exceptional career and your retirement. I wish you happiness and all the best in the years to come.
At this time, which we normally have board comments, I think it'd be appropriate if we all share some thoughts about the Chancellor, starting with Trustee Garrett.
Well, a lot, a lot has been said already this evening. And, and from my perspective, I wanna, uh, thank you for, for your service. You know, when we went through the, the faculty strike, that was a unique period of time. And Chancellor Young, I think you really demonstrated your ability to, to communicate effectively with, with employees in the district, especially faculty. You, you listened to everything they had to say. And I, and I don't think we would have gotten through that if it hadn't have been for, for your dedication, your willingness, and, and your leadership to overcome that, that period of our history. So I wanna thank you for that. And overall, just thank you for your dedication and service to, to the students and, and to the community. And I, I wish you well. Thank you.
Trustee Hinton? You're muted.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to thank Chancellor Young for the time that I've been on the Board and the helpfulness that you've guided me and others through policy and procedures and other topics, and the openness of going out to lunch with, with, when it was Ann and I, and then with Leslie and I, and whoever and I would just be there. And, um, I learned a lot. I've learned your humbleness. And I hope that as you go on with your career, that you will take what you've been given at MJC and carry it along with you. I'd also like to, um, go on a different realm and make a public apology to those that are upset that I don't always have my camera on, or sometimes it just tips over. But I am going through some major medical, um, and I'm fighting it. And so if you ever wanna see what's going on, come on over and visit. I met with Eric a few months ago, and it was a great opportunity. And you can see that I'm not in here just having a gale time. But it's really a lot of work and causes a lot of pain. But I'm hopefully, within the next month or two, that I'll be back. That's really my goal. And I'd like to say a special thanks to the HR team there at MJC for the work that they've done, that Dr. Tran has done, and her family, to help get things working. Because for six months, I wasn't doing anything here to get me better, and that made things 10 times worse. So I wanna thank everyone. My heart's been with you guys. And just continue, could use the prayer or kind thoughts, and appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Trustee Bakes?
Thanks, Nancy. I hope to see you back here in person soon. Getting back to our Chancellor. When Henry came, he brought a new openness to our culture. He welcomed participatory governments, governance, and open communication between trustees and stakeholders, such as my office hours. He supported our successful efforts to create a due process policy, which took a couple of years, but you were there the whole time. And he managed to forge a good relationship with each board member. And as you can tell, we're a pretty diverse group. And you've been a force for collegiality, for stability, and calm through some pretty tough times. And I'm very thankful for your long tenure here at the district, and I wish you the very, very best.
Trustee Davis?
Just to be clear, would you like us to package all of our comments, or come back to comments later and just talk about Henry?
Both.
Oh, okay. Well, let me just mention a few things. Uh, I attended the CLC State Conference. And fabulous sessions. You know, we heard about the uncertainty of the budget multiple times. But we also, uh, had opportunity to complete the AB 2138, I think that's the right number, 2138 Ethics Training, which is now a requirement for trustees. And I'll tell you, it's not painful. It's actually quite good information. And, uh, you know, that, uh, I'm done with that now. And, uh, it's, it's booked, right? We have it, okay. And you'll have opportunity to, to experience what I experienced. Also at the conference, the last thing that I'll mention was, there was this term that I hadn't heard before, and I kinda felt like I'm, I'm missing out. Maybe you haven't heard of it either, or maybe you all have. It's called the Higher Education 2025 Cliff. Okay. So the Higher Education 2025 Cliff, I learned, was that, starting in 2025, the number of 18-year-olds in our nation is going down. And if you go back to 2007, when these young people were born, that's the start of a birth rate decline. That's, there's been no up, there's only been down. And part of that presentation, though, reminded us that community colleges were not just after 18-year-olds. We provide service for all ages. And for many adults returning to, uh, education, and also, unlike some of our four-year, you know, universities who really target that demographic, we, we can, uh, saying, you know, we're not as susceptible to the 2025 cliff. But it says something that we need to be aware of. By the way, it's still going down, the birth rate. All right. And the next, I would like to welcome, uh, Dr. Tran to your interim position. I'll be working with the governance team to support you in, in your role. Henry, I recall when you came out, you were a new chancellor, and you came out to the school district where I was serving as superintendent to make a personal introduction and just to sit and discuss opportunities for our students to come to, to the district schools. And, and I meant a lot to me that you, as a chancellor, would come out even to a smaller rural district and meet the superintendent and spend the time that you did. And not only once, you did it another time. You brought college president out to meet with, with me and, and our high school principal. And really appreciate that you did that. And that was my first connection with you. And then when I thought about running for the Office of County Superintendent of Schools, you and I had an opportunity to meet in your office and just talk about education broader in our, uh, region, and your wisdom, your insight, and all of, uh, I don't know, what you offered in our conversations has meant a lot to me, and also our breakfast times together when we meet. We just discussed the college, and you're always open and in communication and listening to whatever my questions might be and whatever comments I have, you share. I really have enjoyed those times together. And maybe we can continue, you know, in the future. But I, I think you've done a wonderful job. You, when, when you onboarded me as a new trustee, you took time to share with me expectations of governance at the community college level. And, you know, what is good boardsmanship, boards govern, uh, being a, a good board trustee member. And I, you always took the time and is, whatever, how long it took, you never rushed, kept it all, and just enjoyed our time together. Look forward to our friendship continuing.
Trustee Nicola?
Chancellor, if I were to describe you and your leadership style, it would be a gracious leader. And what's been so incredible to watch and for me to learn from you? You never lose your temper, which is incredible when you think of the human state of emotion and how many issues you have encountered, either with the Board, with staff, or just with life. I've really learned a, a great deal from your leadership style, and I especially appreciate the support and enthusiasm you've put into the third site on 33, and just really helping to, to ramp that up and get the right people talking. So thank you for your years of service. Thank you for your heart. I wish you and your wife and your children the absolute best, and really appreciate the time that you've put into Yosemite Community College. And welcome to Dr. Lena Tran. We're excited for this next chapter. And we're excited to move forward. So thank you all.
You know, most people don't know, but I was actually recruited for this board by Andy Martini and Abro Haas. And if there aren't two different people. But, um, when I finally decided that I would run, Abe said, let's go have lunch with the Chancellor. Now, I wasn't at the stage yet where he was telling me to take food home for my wife yet, but it was a very, very good meeting. I think we went to El Rosal and Turlock. He then upgraded to Panera. But Chancellor, you've, you've been very kind to my wife and I. You've been very respectful of my wife as the mayor of Turlock. And she has really appreciated getting to know more about MJC. I had a lot of college experience over 40 years, but I had never been involved with community colleges. So it was a learning experience, and Chancellor, you really helped me with that. And we wish you all the best. So, so at this time, I, I did skip over, uh, future items of, of agenda, so we'll do that last. Antonio just jumped off. Chancellor, what do you have to say?
I just wanted to thank the Board, and then, uh, the constituent groups, and the faculty, the administrators, and the qualified professional staff for being a great team during my tenure here. We've gone through a lot since 2017. And I could not have succeeded without your support. And I will always remember the good times that we were together through difficulties, especially during the lockdown and then during COVID. We all worked together as a team and emerged from the, the pandemic stronger than ever before. And I will always treasure the great memories that I have working with, uh, the constituencies. And I will say that, uh, this has been the highlight of my career. So thank you all. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and say a thing? I know a lot of you already commented. Anybody wanna say anything? No meeting would be complete without me forgetting something. So now I have to go back to requests for future board items. Do you have any, Leslie?
I just wanted to request a follow-up on the, um, potential modifications to the Brown Act as we sent a letter out with our lobbying firm, with Townsend Public Affairs. So, yeah, when, like to know what's happening there.
Trustee Garrett, anything?
No, I would just, real quick, uh, because I thought we were just talking about Henry there for a minute, so, um...
Trustee Davis changed that, because he's...
Yeah, I know, I know. Because he's, he's more astute than I am, so, um... But I wanna, uh, thanks for the participation at the Ag Scholarship Breakfast. Trustee Bakes was there as well. I wanna, I attended the Spring Fire Academy graduation this past Monday. But I'm gonna save the best for last. You know, it's the one thing that we do as trustees is to attend the graduation every May. And that's a special time to, to... May, and that's a special time, to, to see everyone, walk the stage. You know, there are some people that exert their power and push trustees aside and say, no, this is my student. No, but it, it, it's just great to see the love and affection and dedication of faculty and classified professionals, because when you look at it, all that work that has to be done behind the scenes, and, you know, it's, it's, it's great being told what to do by a dedicated classified professional. Okay, trustee, get up here, get in line. But it's great. It, it's a great experience. The weather was not cooperating a whole lot, but, but the spirit was there, the love was there, and it was a lot of fun. So thank you guys always for allowing us to participate and, and share in your, in your dedication at that moment. So thank you all.
I have one more. Of course. Well, I didn't get a chance to welcome Dr. Tran, and I really look forward to working with you and doing anything I can to help. I also wanted to say that I went to the memorial for Steve Collins, and it was a wonderful celebration of a man who provided many decades of service in a variety of faculty and administrative roles. And he was a man who was rightly known as Mr. MJC, and I saw many faculty and admin there. And Brian was our emcee, I don't know what to call you, at a memorial. But anyway, it, it was truly beautiful, and I'm very thankful for his service and the respect that everyone showed for him, so.
I was able to go with President Sanders and interim Chancellor Tran to the accreditation thing. I'd never been to one of those. It was really interesting. Unfortunately, I made the comment, is there anything you'd like me to do? And they said, yeah, come on, serve on an accreditation team. I said, well, if it's in Hawaii. But anyway, thank you so much. The next regularly scheduled Board of Trustees meeting will be held on Wednesday, June 11, 2025. Closed session will begin at 3:00, open session at 5:30 here in this room. We're adjourned.